This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So we're ready to roll call in. I was hoping Shannon would be able to make it. And I believe she is coming. I wanted her to be first up to roll call in. But she's not here right now, and I didn't want to make anybody else wait. So that being said, when she shows up, I will welcome her. Let's roll call in. We have enough for a forum. So let us roll call in to begin tonight's public hearing on the disposition of elementary schools. Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Maren?
Goldstein here.
And Lori.
Garcia here.
And Cynthia Kuzinski here. Okay. So we're going to turn it over to Dr. Leclerc and Jeff Bag.
Thank you. Good evening. So we're holding a special meeting to take a vote. Actually, three votes are needed by the committee to begin the process of declaring the buildings, the elementary school buildings as surplus. And then they will be turned over to the city at an agreed upon time. And as we move into the new school building. So we have a resolution to read and a vote to take. Jeff Bag, do you want to say anything? Otherwise, I'll read the resolution.
If I could, thank you. I think you did a great introduction. I would just add that there was a cover letter provided to the to the school committee. And I did want to just highlight or just reiterate and make sure everyone understood that we started this process all the way back in 2018. You know, in the lead up to the vote that funded the new school. In 2019 and 2020, we did a year long downtown strategic plan. Where we held two well attended public meetings. And that was an opportunity for people to talk about the things that they wanted to see and hope to see in the schools, the school buildings. And it also looked at the whole downtown as a whole. Then in 2021, we also did and completed a housing production plan. And it's a state kind of required document that towns and cities have to do to come up with a plan to produce more affordable housing. And so that was completed. And it definitely sets out the fact that we need affordable housing. It's just a general especially in East Hampton. And then in, over the past year, we have formed a committee, the mayor, the mayor's office, the mayor formed an advisory committee to work on preparing a request for proposals. So it's an RFP. And that's kind of this document that will establish basic information about East Hampton. It'll establish information about the school properties and the school buildings. And then it will solicit development proposals. And it has risen to the top that one of the most desirable outcomes is the conversion of the buildings to affordable housing. So that committee has met. There's a webpage. If anyone's interested in more information, all the meetings have been recorded and are available off of the planning department page under current projects. And so that was transmitted out just for background information. And then, you know, the unique thing that we're trying to do is we, we're hoping the school committee will vote tonight. And allow our process to keep moving forward. The important part of the three or four votes is that it will, it will allow the school committee to finish the school department, to finish whatever your process is, to empty the schools. And we've had some discussions about maybe mid-July. And then at that point, once the school department is satisfied that the properties are really no longer being used, the school committee will write a letter to city council and finalize the action. So I have been, you know, I'm a little analogy kind of person, but this is like a gate. So we're just trying to open the gate to allow the RFP process to move forward. While the school committee and the school department can still pick the final date to have the action actually occur. And so it's to declare the property surplus, to transfer the properties to the city and the city council. And then that the transfer is contingent upon the final date. And that's in the, in the document, it's called the condition precedent. So you can thank the city attorney for that language. And then, so that'll give the school department the flexibility. And then just, I'm almost done. I think just for general information for other people who are interested. We have probably another four weeks or so with the RFP language. And so we think we'll transmit that whole packet of information to city council. And they will have several subcommittee meetings to review the RFP contents. And then it comes out of that and goes for a vote by the whole city council. And we're hoping we can have that maybe queued up for their first meeting in July. So all of this is trying to be efficient and expedient. Without this vote, you know, happening this way, we, we wouldn't be able to do anything. We wouldn't even be able to start our, the gate, we wouldn't start our process till July. And then that'll set us back to releasing an RFP in December or January. And then, you know, the, the rest of the process just gets elongated after that. So that's kind of the purpose that we're, we're looking at here. So I think with that, I'll answer questions or just be here.
And I would just say to compliment what Jeff has already noted. We, Jeff and I have spoken about this date. I've worked with my leadership team. The target date of July 15th is an agreed upon date by all the parties. We have an anticipated move in date for the new school, for the administrative teams. And when everything will be moved over from the moving companies. And when teachers are expected to have everything packed by the end of, the end of June. And we have all this already targeted. So there have been a lot of behind the scenes discussions. Jeff hasn't done this in isolation. We've consulted many times about this. So I just want to let everyone know that. So if you're ready, I will read the resolution and the vote.
I think, Maren, the vote will take later on after we close the hearing further down. But any questions? I think Maren had questions.
No, Cindy, I just wanted you to acknowledge another person, another committee member now, please.
Okay. Well, I was going to do that when we closed public hearing. But we can do it now. You're going to be the first one to roll call in, out of public hearing. But Shannon, welcome back. We're very happy to have you back with us. So any other questions about this? So we will.
I'll just say one thing. I think that, you know, we've talked about this from the very beginning. We've been, you know, Jeff says 2018. It's probably 2013 when we really started the process of trying to find alternatives to our elementary schools or to White Brook. And, and so this is really just the final piece that's sort of allowing the city to move forward with these buildings. So it's just really exciting to see this as the capstone, as our Mountain View School is still being finalized. This, this is the sort of next step after that. So it's just really exciting and definitely support it.
Anybody else? Jeff?
Can I just add something too? Because I, I had noted in the cover letter and I, is that okay? I just because I know that not everyone is aware of where we are in the process. So this was a good introduction. And I did want to just make sure that everyone knows that, you know, we are, we're trying to go fast for, you know, a municipality. We're, we're moving kind of at a snail's pace, actually. But even if we release the proposal, like the request for proposals, you know, and we get them back in, say, September, October, I just wanted to say that there are no shovels in the ground for quite a long time. So this process is actually very long still where on an ideal situation, we might receive proposals in, say, September, October, November. Those, whoever the city might select has to go through at least a year's worth of due diligence, research, they investigate things, they have to get permitting. So I just wanted to, you know, let people know that there's nothing immediately happening. Although we're just trying to make the process unfold in kind of in a timely manner. So I just wanted to get kind of air that out to let people know that there's nothing happening immediately. And for example, if the July 15th date needed to be August 15th, there's really no issue. The only thing that we would foresee happening sometime in the summer is we are going to offer the opportunity for potential developers to visit the sites. And that can be tailored along the way. So there's nothing hard and fast about that either. So I just kind of wanted to air that out just a little bit to let people know.
Thank you.
But the buildings will also no longer be on our budget. So going forward, heating, cooling, any of that, you know, not cooling, but electricity. Is on the city's. Part of the reason why we're trying to move fast, because the longer they sit, the more challenging everything's going to be. So we're just trying to keep pace with you guys. We're getting, you know, ready to move out. So that's good. Thanks. That's why we demolition White Brook.
Any other questions? Then would someone like to make a motion to close a public hearing and begin our regular session?
I'll make a motion to close our public hearing and begin the public, the standard school committee session.
Back to that. All right. Shannon, you're the guest of honor tonight. So you're the first to roll call.
Shannon Denham, I.
All right. Megan Harvey.
Oh, sorry. Megan Harvey, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, I. And we're very, very happy to have you, Shannon. We've missed you. You missed that.
Very happy to be here. Trust me.
Okay. So we're going to begin with announcements. I do want to say that we will be going into executive session. At the end of this meeting, we're going to be adjourning from there. We're going to be conducting collective bargaining with the non-union personnel. All right. So Megan, do we have correspondence?
We do. We have very few items of correspondence to discuss this week. We do have one that we were referring to at the beginning of the meeting from Julie Nelson requesting that we figure out this closed captioning business, which we wholeheartedly would like to do. And we are going to investigate and figure out how to do that. We also received correspondence from a teacher, Sean Chan, who requested investigation into an incident that happened at a We the People event in Kelly Brown's class two weeks ago, a week ago. And so we received that email as well.
Okay. So that, that request is about the mayor. And I need to make two comments. One is that we do not condone racist behavior or comments of any kind. And we will be conducting an investigation. That being said, the mayor is away. And until the mayor comes back, we cannot finalize anything. So we will be waiting to really proceed once she returns.
If I could just add to that, I think it's critical though, that she does put out some sort of response and you know, recognizes the incident and gives clarity from her perspective as soon as possible. As she, she was still in the country before this, after this happened. And unfortunately, she did not choose to respond before she left the country. So.
All right. But I want to hold our discussion of this until we've done the investigation and until the mayor has come back. So that the mayor has a chance to speak for herself. But know that the school committee does not condone or support any racist comments, any racist behavior of any kind. All right. Do we have any gifts?
I do not have any gifts this week.
All right. It is time. We put you early. So you don't have to wait forever for our student update. Hit it.
Thank you. Well, first off, student council has set in stone the themes for the days of our spirit week, which will be the week after April break. On Monday, we will have inside out clothes day. Tuesday will be tie dye day. Wednesday will be dressed as your favorite person slash sunglasses day. So people have the option. Thursday will be wear red day, which we are doing for autism awareness. And Friday will be class color day. We are doing that for the pep rally. Ninth grade will be wearing white, 10th grade will wear gray, 11th grade will wear maroon, and 12th grade will wear black. Next, we have also finished our planning on what we'll be doing for the pep rally that will be on Friday, April 29. So the pep rally will start at 12:36. And as students enter the gym, the band will begin playing some songs. Once everyone is seated, there'll be a short opening speech. And then we will recognize all of the sports teams and the We the People team for all of their accomplishments in this past year. We will then move on to the activities, which include a donut eating contest, a game of musical chairs, a three legged race, and the spirit trophy being awarded to the class officers of the grade that earn the most spirit points this year. And the main event at the pep rally will be the seniors versus staff volleyball game that will start at 1:26 and go until the end of the pep rally. During the game, we will also have a fundraiser where students will be able to pie teachers with small plates of whipped cream. Teachers have volunteered for the fundraiser and students will pay $1 to pie their teacher. The proceeds will go towards funding for the activities student council plans on doing next year. And finally, student council is going to be running, is still going to be running, the concession stand for the Mamma Mia play, even though it had to be postponed. But the new dates for the play are now Friday, April 29th at 7:00 PM. Saturday, April 30th at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, May 1st at 3:00 PM. So we just want to make sure people are aware that even though it was postponed, it's still going to happen. And the tickets that anyone may have bought will be honored at these new dates as well. So that is all that I have. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. I love Spirit Week as a teacher. It's fun to see the kids and the staff really being together and have a great time. So thank you. All right. So we would like to open up public comment. I will ask that you state your name and where you live and keep your comments to three minutes, please. So if anybody wants to signal that they would like to speak, we will let you do so. I'm scrolling through. And I do not see anyone. Give it another second. If you want to talk, please raise your hand. Okay, there's Jen. All right, Jen. You can unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi. Sorry, I'm in the car, but I hope that my signal is okay. I'm not driving. I'm, I want to, I, I want to talk about something that is not really on the agenda, but wanted to kind of ask that, that the school committee take up a conversation about MCAS. And I, and this can be a long term conversation. MCAS has been a long term standardized testing has been an ever intensifying thing. And we had a little break from it for a few years. And I think that that is why for many of us, many parents and kids, it feels particularly jarring this year. My own, my, my own, I opt out, I opt my kid out of standardized tests, which is every, every parent's right to opt their kid out. There's no penalty for doing so. Want to let parents know that. And, and the, and the principal of my kid's school, he goes to Mountain View. And his teachers have been fine about, about that as expected. And as they were last, the last time that he took it in third grade. But I've heard that, that that isn't universally the case. And that, that both a lot of parents, some parents and some kids have been cajoled and in some cases shamed for opting out of MCAS. So I want to bring that to folks' attention, to the attention of the committee. Also, some of the tactics that have been used to get kids to take MCAS seriously and to address their stress in schools this year have included bribing them with candy and gum. And that is not one, that is not one teacher. It is several teachers in several buildings. So it is, it isn't an individual teacher issue or a principal issue. It appears to be a district tactic. So I'm interested in a discussion about that and what it means to what, what it means to be convincing our kids that these tests are important by bribing them with candy and gum. And the appropriateness of governor's school in general, it introduced my child to gum for the first time. So thanks for that, MCAS. I guess I also would just want to say that, 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 that the reason that has been given for for pressuring kids and parents to, to take MCAS has been that, that it, that they will harm the school if, if they don't. That it will harm the school if kids don't do their job to, to raise test scores. And to do their best on these standardized tests. And that stands in a pretty sharp contrast to a mountain of growing concern among both educators nationally, as well as researchers, that, that MCAS in various ways, that standardized testing, state standardized testing really causes real harm to kids on multiple levels, on a policy level, by legitimizing a policy that a testing focus for our schools that limits what we consider meaningful education and what teachers are able to do and imagine for our kids. And on a really specific level, it narrows curriculum to focus many, many weeks of our kids learning and school time on passing tests rather than learning meaningfully. And I've experienced this, my kid has experienced this in, in his education. And it isn't the fault of East Hampton Public Schools. This is, this is a national issue, a state issue. But I, I think that we should open up a conversation about it because we have a choice both as youth and as parents and as teachers and as administrators and how we deal with this, this harmful policy for our kids. And for many kids, the actual experience of taking MCAS has caused extraordinary stress. And, and, and I think, I think we should care about that. And so I would love for us to open up a conversation district wide about how we respond from our different perspectives to standardized testing. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else? This is the time to make sure you raise your hand or let us know. Okay, I do not see anybody else. And so I am going to close public comments. All right. Let us continue on. All right. We have a technology update?
We do. So if I could just introduce the folks that will be doing the presentation tonight. Of course, Julian Levin, our curriculum director, has been here many times. Actually, all the people doing the presentation have been here many times. To get kicked off this evening, Cindy Mojica is going to speak first. And I believe Ann Tally is going to speak after Cindy. And then Julian will bring it home for us. So Cindy, do you want to jump in? Or am I turning it over to Julian?
I just have to share my screen. Yes. Let me, let me share my screen for Cindy. But yeah, Cindy should go first. All right. Cindy, it's all yours.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Mojica, and I reside here in East Hampton. I am the current diversity and inclusion belonging center liaison at East Hampton High School. And we're here to give you a few upgrades. We have five events. We started today with cultural awareness. These events are going to be offered workshops to the teachers. So the days are April 12th, April 14th, April 26th, 28th, and May 3rd. We did have an open house in March. We gave a progress to the guardians and students. We had over 60 visitors at the center, which was amazing. And then we did have the educational display, the presentations, the bulletin boards that we have been creating. We have been collecting more data about equity, diversity, inclusion, belonging. We also have the diversity leadership club in the center. These students are, we have 19 students in the club. And they have been receiving some workshops and some training about equity and diversity. And they have been, and they will be showing up in these workshops. They are part of it. They've been trained to actually be part of these workshops. Then I would like you to know that the Safe Something Youth Initiative is part of Safe Passage. We still have opening for the Youth Violence Prevention Lab, the IBSory Group, and Leadership Academy. They will be two weeks in the summer. If you would like more information, we'll be sharing that information. It's right there with Amy DiCaprio. She can give you all the information about Safe Passage if you have any other questions. And I think you can see it here. I think she's online. If you have any question for her or for me. So I don't know if we are going to do that. I think that's it, right, Julian?
That's it. Yeah. We just wanted to give you a quick updates and serve some like new developments in the, in the Equity Center. And, yeah. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for joining us. And I went to the presentation today, the cultural awareness presentation. And it was really engaging and so awesome to see the students from the diversity leadership club there. You know, really interested in having conversations with adults about cultural awareness. So thank you for making that a possibility for all of us.
Thank you.
All right. And now I'm going to introduce Ann Tally.
Hi, Ann. Hi, everyone. I'm Ann Tally. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Healthy Youth Coalition here in East Hampton. We are primarily a substance use prevention focused coalition, but we have been doing a lot of work this year on technology, internet safety, internet, you know, screen time awareness, phone awareness, mainly because parents have been coming to us concerned about this, especially after the time during the pandemic, remote learning, et cetera. So we put on a couple of presentations already with the Hampton County DA's office. And this is our third presentation that's going to be presented tomorrow night. It's going to be with the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County. The presenter is Kayla, and she seems like she's going to be really great. This, this presentation is focused for elementary and early middle school families. Since the ones we had before were for middle and high school. And I wanted to say one more thing. I didn't actually have Julian make a slide for it. I should have. But on May 3rd, we're going to be also collaborating with other coalitions in the area to show the film Screenagers 2. And that's going to be like a two week window of viewing. People will be able to have the link sent to them and they'll be able to watch it on their own time. So that's another technology focused event that we're having pretty soon. And I do run a parent group once a month, the second Wednesday of the month. I won't be doing it tomorrow because of this presentation, but typically I meet for an hour with parents who are concerned about any sort of issues related to teens and parenting, substance use, prevention, mental health and technology. Vaping is a big concern that we're addressing right now, trying to plan some events for the fall. And yeah, I think that's about it. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ann. So good to have you here. And yeah, so as the intro to the, the technology update, I just wanted to have Cindy and Ann come in and give some updates from, from their you know, perspective. Because I think two of the things that are the most pressing in terms of what we are worried about with the, the ever progressing technology landscape is the health and safety of our students. And then also how equity and diversity is honored through, you know, everything we do, obviously, but, but especially in, in technology and how students are getting those skills to address what they're seeing online, in schools. So with that, always nice to have people who are super smart go first. And so I'm going to take up the rain or the, the end here and give you a little bit of a status update on technology in the district. And I just want to start by saying in 2019, in the before times, we had a plan to go one to one over your, a couple of years, one to one, meaning what, you know, every student had a device in the district. And to sort of do this gradual rollout of technology. And on March 13th of, of 2020, all of our really intentional planning for a gradual rollout came to a screeching halt. And we immediately reverted to a more emergency plan that was not our gradual intentional rollout, but rather we need to get a device in the hands of every student right now, because that's the only way that they're going to be able to connect with their teachers. So, and things changed quite a bit. And I think any parent listening will know that, you know, when the devices came you know, when the devices came home and the remote learning started, um, suddenly technology looked really different than it had um in previous years. And so we've been, um, you know, keeping up with that, we, uh, at the beginning of the 2021 school year, we had eleven days, um, such a gift, eleven days of professional development around technology and remote learning, and introduced um, a slew of new tools to use. Um, we asked teachers to start using Google Classroom as a way to um connect with students. We adopted Zoom as our primary, um, I mean, we're here today on Zoom, so obviously you know this. Um, and um a couple other tools that became really important to just, you know, keep eyes on students and um to, you know, have any kind of collaboration happen between educators, because we were all in our, in our homes. And so on the the heels of that, we are now faced with, um, you know, what what's next? Like, we had a, we had an intentional rollout plan, what's the next step in um both continuing what we think is an important um step in um integrating technology in, you know, everything we do uh in our district? Um, but also being really mindful of what's developmentally appropriate for our students and knowing that technology is um is going to be very different for, um, you know, a K to two, um, K to second grade student versus a nine to twelve, twelfth grade student. So, um, I'm here tonight to just give you some idea of kind of what we're doing in the, in the district around curriculum, around some of the tools we use. Um, and I just want you to keep in mind that, um, this is, you know, as everything is, it's a real balance of um, college and career readiness. We know perfectly well that the students we're teaching today will see technologies in five years and in ten years that we can't even dream of today. Um, so trying really hard to like keep pace with um with what's happening in the world and the the innovations we see. Um, and at the same time, being mindful of the developmental appropriateness, you know, what what is a um a child's brain ready to um encounter online? What can they make sense of, what can we help them process? Um, and also, you know, there's a lot, there are a lot of cultural um differences in how parents want, and caregivers want their their students to um uh approach technology. So, you know, all of those pieces are in um every, every planning meeting we have um around technology and our and our movement forward here. So, um, you know, as always, we are, uh, we honor, you know, what the DUCI curriculum standard, the Department of Education uh curriculum standards are, and we want to make sure that we are moving forward um with uh an eye to research and and best practices. Um, and also, we want to hear what our community is concerned about and respond to our community needs. So, we've got a lot of things going on, um, and I'm just going to give you this like very brief snippet. Um, and I apologize, and I could, I mean, yeah, as as you've been told, um, I could talk for hours about this, and I won't. Um, because that's fine, to just have this little brief snippet, and then you can come to me with any kinds of questions, um, and we can talk more. So, um, just a brief overview of our um organizational structure. Um, Darren Polis and and I um run the technology and curriculum departments. Um, we each have um four staff members that we supervise. Um, and um, he, his are largely, his his uh staff members are largely around, um, you know, making sure that things technically work and that we're like technically getting the data submitted to the state, and computers are turning on, and um interactive projectors are turning on, and the TVs that we have at the new school are turning on. Um, I do have to say that the Mountain View technology is um incredible. Um, I have visions for a huge karaoke party that we're going to um plan for the uh cafeterias because there are screens and microphones in all the right places, and you'll all join me, it's going, it's really going to be amazing. Um, and, and then on, in my department, I've got, um, I have two instructional coaches, math and literacy, who really push the embeddedness of technology in um the curriculum for literacy and um math. And um, and then I also have administrative assistants, and then we also have um a family community engagement coordinator who is is working more on the communication side of technology. So we've got the tools of technology, we've got the curriculum standards of technology, and then we have the communication aspects of technology. And between um me and Darren, with the support of obviously um the superintendent and the Director of Special Education and um the Director of Business Services, we all sort of collaborate around um pushing the um, you know, innovation and um, yeah, constant innovation that we see in technology to make sure that we can be doing all of those things um even more efficiently. And, you know, at the heart of everything is preparing our students for the world that they might might encounter in future technology, which we, which we really can't even dream of. Um, so it's a big, um, it's a, it's a big piece of of what we're all doing is making sure that um we're giving students whatever tools we can to aid them in um being successful humans, citizens, um, in the future. In the future that we really can't even dream of, let me just be very clear on that. Okay, so, um, I'm just going to start with just a couple places that technology is really embedded in our programming. Um, I wanted to give you some ideas of like what the sequence looks like. Um, so in pre-K, uh, students, we're we're still one-to-one in pre-K, students get iPads, and um that's the the place where where all we're doing is is really an exposure, right? Recognize that digital tools are used for communication and to convey messages and pictures and words, right? So there's a, um, this thing exists that's happening in pre-K. And then that advances over very few years in the scope of one's life to um grades nine and 10 and 11 and 12, where they're using technology and web-based, current web-based communication platforms. So current means of the moment today, not, um, uh, and I apologize to anyone um here tonight to say this, but like, uh, you know, the kids aren't using Facebook anymore. Um, and so like, what's the current web-based communication platform that they're using? How can we help them uh produce, publish, and update uh writing products, um, arguments, discussions? And then I love that it advances in grades 11 to 12, I really wanted to point this out, um, to in response to ongoing feedback, including new arguments and information. And I think that that's, um, that's something that e- every adult is still working on, like, what's the skill of being able to change your mind in um response to new arguments and information? Um, the, I think, watching what's happened with the pandemic, this has been a real fascination for me. Um, when we encounter uh an argument that is contrary to something that we hold um to believe, uh, what do we do with it? And so that's actually part of our standard, that's that's something that actually occurs in our high school um as part of the embeddedness in the curriculum um for writing. So that's a, that's one example, and I wish I could go back and take those classes because what my high school teachers didn't know about the life I would be living today, um, is is that. And so, um, you know, there's a lot of of really incredible skill that's happening um that we didn't even have access to as adults. So I love that. Um, in history and social sciences, this is another example of the, just the spectrum. Um, in pre-K, we um ask students to engage in discussions respectfully with diverse peers. Um, but by grades nine to 12, like, we're asking them to use print and oral technologies and digital technologies to actually present those arguments and and try to change people's minds um in in the face of, you know, so much misinformation that we encounter, um, again, because of technology. So, um, you know, again, there's just like such a spectrum of what we're um planning for from pre-K to 12. Um, in math and science, my favorite part here, I wanted to to show this all, like, I, but, you know, in in the mathematic guiding principles, um, I love the idea that, um, you know, it's okay for to to give a a student a calculator at at a certain point developmentally today. You know, like, I I was asked to do long division in my head when I was in um high school, but that's, we're not asking students to do that today. It, we're we're saying, there are other things you need to learn, that's not space we need to take up in the curriculum. So there are also things that we let go in technology. Um, and I'm sorry, there are things where we let go in the curriculum standards because we can use technology to um uh, to advance, you know, thinking and planning, and we don't always have to just um do what we were taught in school. We can do something that's completely different because there have been innovations that can help us. Um, and I I included the science grade five um standard as well, just because it, I, I, this is like the one place in the standards where I feel like technology is defined really well, so it folded it on the slide there. Um, recognize that technology is any modification of the natural or designed world done to fulfill, fulfill human needs or wants, right? The wheel is technology, right? So when we're talking about technology, we're talking about so many um broad aspects of our everyday lives. And, um, you know, again, from the sequence of pre-K to 12, this happens in in so many ways, um, embedded right in, you know, the curriculum. I was talking to to Dr. Littler earlier today, and um, and I was like, the technology is every, like, it's everywhere, it's everywhere. And uh, and she was sharing with me that, um, she had shared with a colleague, this is okay, Dr. Littler, that I'm sharing this story, but um, but she had, you know, worked with a Director of Technology um earlier in her career, and she was really clear, like, technology isn't separate. It's it's everything we are doing to innovate and to modify the natural or designed worlds, right? To fulfill any human need or want. So, um, that that made me feel really good, because I think that that's the approach we've taken in East Hampton, is technology isn't separate, it's part of everything we do. Um, okay, so that brings me to, of course, the siloed technology standards, um, which are, uh, you know, as, they were implemented in, or they were um released in 2016, and, um, I think they kind of um have existed out in the world um without a lot of uh support from um the Department of Education. And I'm really excited that our district has chosen um to start offering things like computer science in the high school. It's not mandatory, but we recognize that it is the right way to go for our students to prepare them for college and career, college and careers. And so just going through those, these digital literacy, computer science standards really quickly. Um, computing in society is probably the um area that I hear the most concern about um, security, security of students, and so I'm going to talk more about that in my my next slides. We use two main um tools to protect students. Um, securely is one, I'm going to go into depth about securely, and then also just our firewall for internet. So students, um, just simply don't have access to a number of, um, more, I I think, um problematic uh, websites or apps, um, because we block them with our internet firewall. I will also say that there are so many ways to get around a firewall, and um I guarantee every student in our school district knows more of them than anyone on this call. Um, so, like, we we try so hard to stay ahead of um what students can get access to, and yet, if, we're never going to be ahead, because the students are actually innovating um to get around what are the boundaries that adults set are. That's like the normal development of um of teenagers, is that we set up boundaries, and they're like, they're the best scientists, right? Like, they develop a hypothesis, I can get around this boundary if I do this. And then they set into motion and experiment, and um either they're successful or they're not. But there's not a lot we can, you know, um, prevent in terms of the innovation of youth. They are smarter than us with technology, and um if we are not doing deep work uh with students to promote healthy relationships, healthy boundaries, a healthy lifestyle, then there's not a lot we can do if we're just trying to um create a zero tolerance policy around technology, right? So the the social emotional skills that we work on with students are more important than the literal firewalls we put up to try to protect them, right? Protection is empathy and healthy relationships and healthy boundaries, it's not um an internet firewall. So, obviously, I have some big thoughts about that, and um, again, super happy to um to talk to anyone more about that. Um, the second strand in the digital literacy and computer science standards is visual tools and collaboration. That has been the name of the game for the past two years, I feel like this is a place where we've been um really pushing forward. Obviously, um, collaboration through Google, um, and moving towards, you know, the Google Suite apps has been important for all of us, we know that most students who go to college um will encounter Google in their college environments, and um we want to make sure that they know how to use all those tools. Reminds, a communication tool we've started to use, um, we still use social media, certainly as um a communication tool, we recognize that, you know, maybe not the young people, but the adults are still using Facebook, so we should be engaging with Facebook, um, as a communication tool with adults. Um, I put Zoom on there because I knew we were having this meeting over Zoom, and I wanted to acknowledge that, like, this has actually been a great collaboration tool over the past two years, and, um, you know, I, i- it's increased accessibility, it's increased participation in um our, our, you know, civic world, and I really appreciate that. So that's a, um, that's a nice piece as well. And then we get into um the the third and fourth strands, which are really more about like computing systems, human computer partnerships, that's like AI, um, artificial intelligence, like, what's the neck, what's the, what's on the horizon for technology? Um, you know, students have uh access to start coding robots in in middle school, and, um, you know, they're going to develop the next robots, and um maybe those robots are all going to take care of us in our old age. Um, and, you know, that's in, that's in the hands of the youth, and I I feel very comfortable that if we are um, you know, really using the social emotional learning um skills to to foster what healthy looks like for students, that we'll be taken care of by those robots in our old age. Um, and then computational thinking is is the last piece, and that's, um, you know, very much embedded in our mathematics and our um science and engineering standards. Um, it's definitely the place, modeling and simulation especially, is the place where we, I think, are doing, um, we're we're progressing towards really embracing um our curriculum around computational thinking. Um, we are adding a science and engineering position to our elementary and middle school next year, really to attack um our engineering design process, like, that, that's a, you know, we used to talk so much about the um, the scientific process as being the thing that students need to know, they need to become scientists. And now, um, you know, it's, it's sort of the, that with the design process have really melded together, like, we want design thinkers. We want students who can see a problem and then model a solution, or model several solutions, and then um put together a simulation that will test those solutions until they find an answer. Um, and today I had like the absolute pleasure of um talking with the city engineers, and they have so many projects across the city um that are about uh building models and simulating um engineering designs to stop the effects of um climate change on our cities', waterways, sewer systems, storm drains, et cetera. And so we have a, we have a partnership around, you know, showing students, like, this is, this is what erosion is doing in these areas, and this is how we're modeling and then simulating um a new design to, to to counteract um those effects. So, um, it's been, it's been really exciting to work with them. Um, so that's how we we've embedded these digital literacy and computer science standards in our curriculum. Um, so now I'm going to go back Um, so now I'm going to go back to really quickly um the security piece. Um, I had a really awesome um long conversation with the technology department with Darren and his um, the technicians. And they had a lot to say about securely, which is our our main tool for um filtering out. Um, developmentally inappropriate content for our students. And I want to say like one caveat is that we can't and we probably shouldn't. Um, monitor students' device use if the device is a personal device. So we can do a lot to build those empathy empathy skills and develop um critical thinking skills around. Sources like who do you believe online? Is that a good person to believe online? Um, but the only um, you know, sort of technical solutions that we have. Are attached to our um district devices. And so for a student's Chromebook that they're they're bringing home or an iPad they're bringing home, the securely filter is the main we we do that. And I did, I wanted to share um that they, so they get um alerts. Uh, if you you have a student who's using a Chromebook um in the middle of the night. And they search something um that might be related to um, you know, self harm. Or um, you know, depression or anything like that. Um, one of the phrases that they told me about was the phobia of being alone. Like a student, if a student in the middle of the night is searching something like that on, again, their district Chromebook. Our technicians are getting woken up um to an alert. Like they are on it with um those kinds of searches. And they get an alert, the school principal gets an alert. And um, and they did share that they've had some really good success stories around that, with being able to get students help. Who are um questioning, you know, Google for um, you know, some some sad things that are happening in their lives. Um, but we do have a really good system in place to catch that and um and respond to it. So um, that was a, it was nice to hear them say like, you know, they don't mind, they want to help. And um, they're um, they're happy that there is a, there's a system in place for um for catching that when a student is. Um, you know, looking for something that may be um concerning. Um, and so I have, I have a lot of information about securely. Um, but I think it's probably better, um, you want to ask me questions if you have specific questions about securely. Um, during the pandemic, one of the aspects that we used securely was securely classroom, which actually gave the teachers. Only between the hours of, you know, seven and four P M. Um, access to see exactly what tabs were open for a student on their Chromebook. Um, you know, exactly what they wanted students to see or not see on their Chromebooks. Um, and even, you know, to like close a tab if they saw a student getting distracted by something. So um, you know, between the hours of seven and four, again, on those district Chromebooks, we actually have quite a bit of control. Um, that control ends at four P M every day. And I just wanted to to share that there are a number of other, um, I love that they call them the securely student wellness products. That, you know, we've sort of been thinking about and the technology department. Um, and and I have been, you know, in discussion about especially um securely home is the one that we've talked about a lot. Um, and securely auditor, securely auditor would do that same um search for concerning. Um, phrases or words, but it would monitor all students' emails, everything in their Google Doc, anything in their drive. Um, so it would pick out those pieces and and send an alert to the technicians and to the um administrators. And then securely home basically does what securely classroom does. But parents um would control it again from the out, from now from the hours of four P M to seven A M. So the hours that the teachers are on it, the parents could be on it. Um, so those are, those are a couple of things we've talked about in moving forward um with our, you know, student wellness. Do I pause and wait for Lori, your call on?
Yeah, Lori. Shall we wait for questions? I, no, you can, you can ask.
No, jump.
Okay, so do we not have anything in place right now that is like securely classroom? I know you just said securely securely home would put the onus on parents. But do you mean to tell me that um our teachers have no way of auditing? What is on the student screens when they're sitting at their desks?
Oh, no, no, so so parent, I'm sorry. Um, classroom is implemented, yes. So teachers have access from seven A M to four P M. Um, the securely home would then give parents that same access that is given to teachers through securely classroom. But from the hours of four P M to seven A M.
Okay, I just want.
Yeah, we have not implemented securely home, but it's a, it's an option that we could certainly, you know, think about. But again, only for the district devices. So if a if a parent, you know, and a a student have a smartphone or or a home computer, we're not monitoring any of that. But yeah, securely classroom has been um in place since um the beginning of remote learning.
And have the teachers been trained how to use it?
Um, the ones, you know, who who uh, yeah, yes, sorry. Um, it was, it was definitely um an option for training. Um, again, like we had a a lot of tools that we implemented at the beginning of remote learning. Um, so I I can't um tell you that it was a mandatory training that absolutely everyone went to. Um, but I can say that securely has um great resources online. And and any teacher who was um interested in learning more had resources at their fingertips to to learn more about.
Julian, I appreciate everything that you're doing, but as we all know, you do far too much right now. And this is a position that actually other districts have, a technology integration specialist. Um, somebody that or more, like I know Northampton has more than one of those. And I know we had one when the pandemic first started, but I I'm just concerned that there's a lot. To be able to teach teachers and to be able to address all the standards. I mean, you've done a phenomenal job. I'm not going to like stop your presentation now, I know you have more. But I'm just concerned that there's not enough to be able to train the teachers in. Uh, because you don't have the the time to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we, I I have a great partner um in the the new director, he's not new anymore. We keep referring to him as the new director of technology, but um, but Darren is is a great partner in this. Um, and one of his technicians, Sarah Marie Holmes, um has been an awesome resource um to um teachers. So it's um, I mean, yes, there's not enough funding for all the things I want to do in the world. That is absolutely true. Um, but um, I do think that um, you know, we have a really good team in place. And it could always be bigger and better, but you know, that would be a a cost benefit analysis of. What we would reduce in order to um, to um, you know, enhance. And so.
Okay, I thank you, I know, I know it's budgetary, but I just, one more. You did like mention Google and we all know how valuable Google is, but I don't feel, and I've said this many times. And many times at meetings, I don't feel that our district uses Google enough. We should all have Google Mail and not have outreach. And I know the city moved over to it, so. And I know some teachers are concerned because they feel that they won't be able to make the switch. It's a very easy switch, but that's the type of concern that I have that we're not moving forward. And there's nobody to help them to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. No, that's actually um a great um segue into just saying that um Darren is. Uh, also like partnering with me on that. We have, we've talked um even recently about what um that switch would take. And you're right, I think more than anything else, the switch to Google takes um. Some like really nice one to one conversations with teachers about how we're going to make it work for them. And it's not going to be a barrier to accessing their curriculum, um accessing the tools that they use. Um, so yes, a a Google rollout plan um is imminent, not to worry.
Um, Megan, Megan had a question or a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering as I um look at some of these great things that that you can do, is there, is this the kind of program that you, we could like? If parents chose to, they could get securely installed and put on phones, devices, computers at home, iPads at home, like whatever they want to hook up to it. So they can be sort of, if they choose to, monitoring everything?
Yeah, so um, the the securely through the district will only monitor um our district devices. But there are um a number of tools out there that parents can um, you know, apps that they can use. I have a thirteen year old, so I'm like super up on all of the things parents can do to monitor um their students' digital um footprint. Um, I think actually that the presentation that Aunt Tally talked about um tomorrow will probably go over a lot of those tools. Um, so yeah, I mean, we um Jean Libby and Tally, like a a a number of us have talked about how. Parent and family engagement next year um can really be focused on how to support parents in. Um, finding the the tool that's right for them and um and using it to for for whatever, you know, purpose they feel is is important in monitoring their student's digital. Um, footprint securely in this case, um what I'm talking about is limited to our district devices because it would be um. You know, it would go through the district's funding. Um, so we can't monitor personal devices, but we can certainly provide guidance again through the the presentation that's happening tomorrow. And then through further um family community engagement events. Um, we can certainly provide guidance on the the apps and tools that parents can use um to monitor um their personal devices.
Yeah, it'd be great if there's a way to like keep it sort of wrapped together and, you know, if only if parents choose that they want to do this. I understand that you wouldn't, you know, the school wouldn't be monitoring um home devices. But like, I would love to have just one platform, like I get the email from securely, I see what my kids are doing there at school. I would love to just like, I don't even know, create an account, log my other devices into it and like have one place where I go to look and like. See, I don't know what's possible securely or if there is something like that, like some, you know, help from the, I don't know how to do all the stuff that you're talking about, right? Like I want to, I want to have something that like encompasses all of our devices and.
That's a point. Yeah, let um, that is a question I'm going to bring back to the tech team. Um, I don't know if securely home is possible for for registering personal devices or if you could have like a separate home account. For securely, yeah, that's a great question. I will, I will um bring that back to the the tech team because I don't, I don't know the answer of of what it would take to have it all on one platform like securely. Um, but yeah, I want that too, now that you've said that. Thank you. Um, and this, this really is, um, you know, not to be uh anti thematic, but that was actually the end of my presentation. So um, if anyone else has questions, um, I would, I would welcome them now. Ben?
Hey, um, I I was wondering about the the overall curriculum standards that you were presenting on and just wondering, are are they from D C? Are they straight from the state?
Yeah.
Okay, and I was, I was thinking about um, uh, can we, can the public see them? Is there an easy access point? Is it on the website or?
Actually, so that's so funny you mentioned that, it's almost like I paid you to do that, um, but he didn't, um, for the record. Um, so this link that I have on this slide um is uh one of my favorite um tools to give. Um, parents and caregivers and it and it's actually also linked on the the district website um under the curriculum page. Um, but the, this particular um place that you can go on the internet gives these family guides in lots of different languages. Um, and they're grade by grade and they give um, you know, a non, as you speak, although if you like, as you speak, yes. The the curriculum standards as written are also public information. Um, you can search D C frameworks and you can get there. Um, but this particular link brings you to the more family friendly um standards guides. And it'll like grade by grade, it'll be like, this is what your student needs to be prepared for this grade. Here are some questions you might want to ask your student about what they're learning in this grade. Um, and it goes through each content area to let you know, you know, just roughly what your student might be learning. Um, you know, engaging in discussions with. Um, so yeah, that's, it's one of my favorite places to to visit. And then definitely public, um, all the frameworks are public information. And if you ever need help like navigating through them, um, that's like actually my job. Um, so I would love to to spend more time um doing that if if that's of interest to folks. Um, but yeah, the the high standard page is the family friendly guide that are, don't have as much as you speak and.
Okay.
Vertical progressions and.
And I'm assuming there's a, there's more there than we saw tonight.
Much more.
Okay, okay, because it was, I was wondering what happens between like first grade and, you know, fifth grade or whatever.
Yes, so the standard strands um that I that I shared tonight, um, and you'll all get this presentation, of course. Um, so I'm, I would take something from pre K and twelve, but there's something at every grade level in between pre K and twelve. Um, the the, it's so it's called vertical progression. I could go into so much depth about this. Um, but the vertical progressions are the skill progressions, like what does this? You know, if if we want a student to leave twelfth grade knowing this thing, what do we have to do in eleventh grade? What do we have to do in tenth grade? What do we have to do in like, like, so it it goes all the way back down to three K. Um, and it really like it sets the college and career readiness goal. And then it backwards plans, um, what skilled progression needs to happen starting in pre K in order to reach that twelfth grade standard.
That sounds good, I mean, I liked, I like that idea, the reverse engineering. Um, but I'm also, I guess I, I'm I'm thinking this may be more of a comment. Because I I was also really keying in on what you're saying about social emotional learning is bigger than a firewall, which I think is a pretty great idea. But that is like a complex idea when we're talking about state curriculums and the drive to force kids through these curriculums. So I just, I think it's, it's just an interesting question of like, how do we kind of honestly wrestle with the kids who maybe are innovating? You know, like around the firewalls and I'm thinking about how do we harness their innovative like spirit as opposed to punishing them for for some of that, which.
Yeah.
Be very challenging. Um. The tendency, the tendency to to punish innovation is 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 not a good thing um in 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 educational institutions. Um, so yeah, I just, I think it's too, it's like an equity question that kind of goes alongside the technology question. And they, and they intertwined points and I I just really hope that our district continues to stay open minded. To how we can like genuinely honor the fact that, you know, you said before times about COVID, well, this is like post times and it just seems like everything's so much more complicated now, so. I hope we can.
Lock everyone up in their homes for a year and a half and uh, you know, we were all a little different on the other end.
Indeed.
Yeah. Um, yeah, Ben, every, like exactly what you said is um what I wrestle with every day. And, you know, I think um, there are some really exciting things happening. An example is um, we're actually getting two um restorative um practices interns from AmeriCorps next year at our high school. And like, that's the kind of um, that's the kind of thing that we're hoping that they'll work on with us. Is, you know, how do we take what's happening for students, what a student's experience is and honor it for being a true experience? And then build on it to um, uh, better our community. Um, and so I think, yeah, you're right on between technology and equity and punishment and innovation. Like those are the intersections exactly that um I'm really excited to still.
Did you just say punishment?
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, so punishments around, like Ben was saying, like, um, if you, if you find a way around the um. The firewall using your virtual private network, I think every, every Gen Zer knows how to um create a VPN now and get around a firewall. Um, but do any of the adults on this call know how to do that thing? I mean, Ben probably does.
No, I think that's, no, I think that's a, that was a person from the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Uh, I don't think there was a celebration of punishment, it was more about, it was more about just like, how do we sort of acknowledge the fact that sometimes when we perceive a kid to be breaking the rules, they're actually being innovative and creative. And and it's on us to not necessarily discipline the person for trying to do something in a better way. That's all.
I'm sorry, I thought that was, I thought that was a little remember, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, so so um, right, not not going to punishment when a student is speaking their truth and um innovating. Um, but rather to honor that experience that a student is having through resorted practices um to better the community. Yeah.
Thanks, Julian.
Questions, comments?
I'll just end by saying that. I'll just end by saying that, you know, with, with collaboration with the Healthy Youth Coalition, what we're hoping to do, and I guess this kind of speaks to what Megan was asking as well, you know, to provide like a menu of options, we keep referring to it as a menu, of ways in which parents can, you know, learn more about what their students might be doing in school, what students might be, you know, accessing on their personal devices. And how to have, you know, more adult conversations around how to guide that discovery process for students. So, you know, we've had some conversations about the Wait Till Ape program. We've had conversations about, you know, the securely filters. You know, the, there are a number of tools we can use. And while the school district doesn't necessarily have purview over all of those, there are still resources that we can offer to parents in the community to, to help them monitor what's happening with technology and their students.
So Megan, you raised your hand?
Yes, yeah. So first of all, I just wondered, Sydney, if you could make a, or if I can make a reminder for folks who are watching that they should not be unmuting and saying something during the meeting, public speak is over. And I had another comment and it's flown, oh, I know what I wanted to say. As we're thinking about sort of like what would be required for like getting all this stuff in place, and it sounds like it's a longer term conversation, I just wanted to, you know, say, rather than thinking about like what we would have to cut back on in order to get new positions or invest more in something like, what is the amount that we need and, and where might that ask come from? Could be like another approach that we could think about rather than like cutting something back. Santa, but thank you. This has been really helpful. And so I appreciate all this information.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as the grant writer for the district, I am always looking for those opportunities. And if anyone else sees those opportunities, please share them with me because we are always bringing in more funding streams to, to try to push forward some of the things that we don't necessarily have in our, in our operating budget. So, yeah, I will, I will keep, keep moving forward on that as well.
So there was a member of the public who wanted to ask a question, but we can't take questions now. Public comment is over. So you are welcome to contact Julianne.
Yep.
Questions. Her phone number is right there.
Yes, yes, please do. Please reach out at any time. I love, you know, talking to all of the parents in the district and figuring out better ways to serve our, our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stop this here now.
Thank you, Julianne. That was great.
Thank you.
All right, so on to our superintendent update.
Thank you.
Yep.
There we go. So just a couple of things. I want to pick up on something Kayla mentioned, our student rep at the beginning of the meeting. I just want to remind this committee and anyone listening that the We the People team will be heading to Washington DC to compete in the Nationals next week. They are leaving on Friday of vacation and they will be gone through Tuesday of the following week. So when we come back, they'll be back in school on Wednesday, April twenty seventh. So they've been working very hard and I think that we can all share that we're very proud of them. I had the opportunity to be a judge up there earlier this week. And they are amazing as they are every year. So we wish them nothing but the best, sending lots of positive thoughts in their direction. And hopefully we'll know how they did by the time we have our next school committee meeting, so I'll keep you all posted. In other news, going back to COVID for a minute, we, the COVID response team met earlier today. We have seen a slight uptick both in our schools and in the community. I think it's worth just keeping an eye on as the community is also keeping an eye on this information. I have continued to share the weekly numbers because some parents wanted that information in order to make decisions about masking. Last week, we had an issue in one of our sixth grade classes. We had a small cluster that consisted of adults and some students. So we notified everyone in that class, all the families, and advised them to use their at-home test, reminded them to do the pooled testing. We told them if they needed at-home tests, we would send them home with them. We advised them to wear masks for the remainder of the week. So we were trying to be really responsive in the moment to a cluster that we had in one of our classrooms last week. If people were not notified, it didn't involve students, the classroom your child was in. So we're monitoring cases. I think this week might be around the same, maybe a little bit higher. We're noticing distribution a little bit more at the middle and high school grades than at the elementary levels. But I will, after speaking with the COVID response team today, if the numbers are high again this week, I'll split it up by grade levels so that parents can know kind of where the numbers are. We also talked about going to work with our city health director, who, you know, they're all part of the team, and do an advisory for families when they return after the vacation, reminding them to test their students at home, reminding them of making sure that they're monitoring their, their child's health, particularly if they've been away on vacation. If families have someone that's at risk in their home, they may want to mask up. So we'll put all that in writing. Megan will send me information next week on numbers since we'll be away and I won't have accurate student counts. But that's just updates that I wanted to share with everyone around COVID. Megan, did I miss anything today? Megan's tracking wastewater for me.
Glamorous life of an epidemiologist. Luckily, I just track what other people are coming up with from that. No, I think that, that's an accurate depiction. I think this is one of those questions that we raised sort of in the, when we talked about removing the mask mandate of like, what, what are we looking for on the other end? I don't know if there's an answer to that, but just something to keep our eye on right now. Certainly, things are in an okay spot right now, but good for families to be aware. So thank you, Dr. Claire.
Yeah, if I could just add a question here. So I think that right now, as we said, you know, the numbers are still low. There is some uptick that's happening. Particularly in the wastewater data. But, you know, I think that by the, the port obviously didn't come out yet today, or at least I didn't see it out from Breeze's office. But I'm hoping that, you know, we're going to be able to see that and we're going to be able to see if we're heading back up into either yellow or red zones over the next few weeks, if it's really proceeding. And at that time, we might need to revisit a mandate of masks within our schools. So I just think that that's going to be really important. If at all possible, to have that report out for the next couple of weeks, out by the Tuesday in two weeks, so that we have that by the time that we're coming into this meeting. If you're at all, it's possible to ask that report to be ready for us to be able to review before we have our school committee, to then be able to look at that and talk about it, if it's something that we need to address or not.
We are indeed back in the yellow. Sorry, someone just walked into my house and the dog's barking. We are indeed back in the yellow in East Hampton.
Yeah, so that's why the concern is there. And so I just think it's important for us to have that in advance of next school committee meeting to be able to have a discussion, then if need be, about looking at masks again.
Yeah, I think, and I, you know, I discussed with the committee today, you know, I think a lot of this is around personal choice. And, you know, I said to the committee, probably over half of the cases last week were identified because of pooled testing. So the majority, at least fifty percent, if not more, of our students don't even have a symptom. They don't even know that they're, that they're walking around with COVID. As opposed to, we probably sent more students home in the last few weeks with a stomach bug. You know, so I could, I could capture those numbers as well, which is also highly contagious and kids are probably a lot more sick over the stomach bug right now. That's probably bringing kids down and households down, households down more than COVID. But I think it is absolutely something to monitor. And I think that with Breeze's assistance next week, we'll work on some wording around advising families to take individual precautions based on their family dynamics. You know, we'll have masks available, of course, in school as we have. And we'll encourage people that want their families to mask, to mask up if the numbers continue to be high, which they may. Megan seems to think there's something, you know, in the Northeast. It seems to be high in the Northeast. So we'll continue to monitor that. And before I end tonight, I did just want to talk briefly about school lunch because I think it's something that I want to make the committee aware of. And let me see if I can bring up my presentation. I just have a few quick slides. And let me go back. Everyone knows that we have been fortunate over the last few years since the pandemic to offer free school meals to all children in East Hampton. Breakfast, lunch, we offered it all summer long. We offered it to young children under five that were not in school. We offered it to anyone in the community that didn't attend our schools, that was zero to eighteen. We've been very fortunate. And we never charged anyone any money. The school district didn't have to pay. It was all due to federal relief because of COVID. The federal government has decided to end that program on June thirtieth. And I know that some of you may have heard that, but I also want to make sure that the community is starting to hear that information because we have not asked parents to pay for meals in quite a few years now. And so this is going to be a surprise to many families next year, and it's going to be a challenge financially for many families. So Congress passed an appropriation that would end all USDA current nutrition waivers on June thirtieth. As a result, Massachusetts schools and schools across the country will no longer provide universal free meals. And so this will impact every household. So what else changes? Well, I want to be clear that as it stands right now, grab and go meals will also not be allowed this summer. Because all waivers will expire this school year, meals will need to be served and eaten on site. So it's no longer grab and go like it was, which was the exception during remote learning. And only elementary school children would qualify for food in the summer, if we could even have a program, which we don't have any plans to right now. And next year, to be clear, there would be a return to regular price meals for breakfast and lunch. Now, I want to just remind the committee and to the committee members that are new, the real downside for East Hampton and for every other community is that we have a very difficult time collecting fees from families. Because this school district and the school committee have said in the past that they don't want a child to go hungry. So if a family refuses to pay, the school district and subsequently the taxpayer in East Hampton has to foot that bill. In FY nineteen, when it had gone for years piling up, we had about a hundred thousand dollars of debt for school lunches, accumulation of several years. And we made an effort and paid that off. And FY twenty, we had a thirty-one thousand dollar meal debt. And FY twenty-one, we still had a twelve thousand dollar meal debt because we were trying to pay off our debts. What we do, just to remind people, is the amount of work that goes into trying to collect fees from the food service department, which sends letters, sends emails, calls families, to the building administration, which then needs to, if, if, if the food service department meets with no success, they turn it over to the school administration, who then has to call families multiple times, asking them to get on a payment plan, asking them to come up with the money. Then it goes to the business office at Central Office. Dale and her staff try to collect funds from people. We send letters, they make phone calls. We put burdens or, you know, caveats on students. They can't get their high school cap and gown unless their parents have paid their debt. They can't get their prom ticket unless their parent pays their debt. So it is a constant struggle to collect fees from families. And some of it may be absolutely legitimate. Families can't afford to pay. So I want to be very clear about that. But there are also many families that can afford to pay and simply will not. They refuse to. And we've been able to, you know, let go of that problem during COVID. One less problem during COVID because everything was supported by the federal government. And now we're going back to this. So we have great concerns. Another challenge prior to COVID, I don't know if anyone here remembers.
Dr. Claire, can I ask a quick question on that? I'm just sorry. So was that cumulative or was that individual on the last side? It's like, as of FY twenty-one, did we have a total of just twenty-one thousand dollars or twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand, yes. That was, that was cumulative. They've been ticking it down, yes. But this is after hours and hours and hours with people.
So now are we at zero now to go forward? Or we, I mean?
I think we're at zero now, yes. Because we haven't had any debt in the last, like, two years.
So Dr. Leclerc, I have a question. Are we going to, like, have a campaign to get this message out to families in multiple ways?
That's why I'm here. That's what I'm, I'm, I've got a slide for you.
Okay, because I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I'm talking about robo-calls, you know, April, May and June, getting this message out. My concern is there are a lot of families that have been depending on this breakfast and lunch.
Absolutely.
It is going to be devastating news. But the earliest that we can get it out and the more we can remind them. And so I guess I'm jumping your slide and Ben has a question. But that's my big concern is making sure we use multiple avenues to get that message out. Okay, Ben, you have a question?
Super quick. I'm just wondering, like, how do, how do families pay their bill? Is there like a, is there like a, you know, online?
It's an online payment system, Ben.
Okay.
And so people are, you know, link their card to it and the card, it's not like the tolls where, you know, you get down to a certain amount and it automatically hits your card again. It doesn't do that. You have to actually do it. So many families don't do it. And our struggle is we don't let kids go hungry. So we're still feeding children, even though we're not collecting funds from families, even if they're two-income households. They simply refuse to pay sometimes. And it's something that this committee struggled with, you know, for years. This committee has always advocated for feeding every child. But there's, there's a consequence to that. And, and Ben, you asking that question makes the point that I'm going to make on this slide. So Maple Elementary ended up years ago qualified for free breakfast and lunch before the pandemic. Under the federal community eligibility, eligibility program, they had at least forty percent. they had at least 40% direct certified free and reduced eligibility to qualify. So that means they had a lot of students that met that threshold in the state. And so Maple Elementary School probably has not paid fees for lunches in at least four years. So this is going to be a shock to the system for every Maple family that's now going into Mountain View. But the other caveat is if Maple stayed at Maple, they would probably continue to qualify. But moving into the big school and now having children from across East Hampton changes the eligibility level. So Dale is in the middle of working on this, submitting it to the state, but we may or may not qualify at Mountain View. And it may only be for certain grades, like maybe elementary, but the middle school kids will have to pay. So it will be a challenge for our families to kind of get acclimated to this again. Now, one thing that I wanted to point out, and the reason that I thought I would bring this information to you tonight is because beyond starting to get the message out to families, and this is where I thought you were going, Cindy. Right now, the state of Massachusetts, the legislators have a bill in front of them. And it's HB 714. And so what I am hoping to do is get your support to send a letter to our legislators to advocate for this bill. And this is, the summary is requiring all schools providing lunch under the National School Lunch Act or School Breakfast to make such meals available to each attending student at no charge. So this is for Massachusetts only. It directs schools to maximize available federal funds, requires the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to reimburse any amounts not covered by federal funding, and requires Desi and the Department of Transitional Assistance to promote the availability of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program to families by providing direct application assistance to any families that need it. The status of this bill right now is an extension order was filed until June 1st because the legislator is waiting, the legislature is waiting to see if the federal government will make a revert, reverse their decision. But the feds are not likely to extend this. So in the, in the likelihood that the feder, the federal government is not likely to extend this, I would like to advocate as a school district to our legislators to push this bill through in Massachusetts. And so I wanted to bring it to your attention. I didn't know if you knew about it. Number one, and we'll still do this hand in hand with getting information out to families. But I think that, I think every school district should push with their legislators to have this move forward. And that's all I had.
I, I, I agree. I mean, this is a major hit to families. Maren?
So unless there's needed for more conversation, I would like to make a motion that we support and encourage Dr. Leclerc to send this sort of message on passing this bill for additional funding for lunches and such for our students.
I'd like to second that, please.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other discussion? Mearing? Oh, Ben?
Um, what, this starts after this year?
Yes.
Um, yes, after June 30th, the waiver ends.
And so there's no, like, summer food programming?
There's nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the state is trying to put it into the budget so that they can cover bills for next school year.
Lori?
So I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Leclerc. So are you planning on writing a letter that you want us to sign on to?
I would love it if you would sign on to it. I'm happy to add the school committee's individual names.
And I, I also feel it would be helpful for anyone listening to contact Senator Vellis and contact Rep. Carey, who both are highly invested in our students and public education. And it helps for more people to contact them. And their contacts can be found readily on the web at the State House.
Okay, so this is a vote and it's been seconded to just support Dr. Leclerc's letter. So Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, overwhelmingly, aye. Thank you for bringing this up and doing this.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye, absolutely.
Ben?
Thank you.
And Hersy, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, absolutely, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight.
And the only other question is, I, I just want to reinforce, you're going to still get this message out?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Parents multiple ways and multiple times.
Cindy, I think, I don't know, it might be me, but you're freezing up and I can't quite hear you.
I think it's Cindy.
Can maybe, maybe turn off your screen for a second.
Okay. Cindy, speak now so we can see if we can hear you.
Well, she's still muted.
Cindy, I'm mute. I am. Let's see. Are we back? Now we can hear. Yep. Okay, we're good. All right, thank you. That's terrible. All right, um, next, School Committee Report and Discussion. So we start with the disposition of elementary schools. That is a vote. Is there someone that would like to read the letter and then have a second and a vote?
I'm happy to read it if you all are voting, if you want me to read the resolution.
Sure, except that really it's, I move that the school committee, so it really should be a school committee member. Do you want me to read it? You want me to read it?
Go for it, Cindy.
Okay, all right, here we go. It's long. Whereas the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts is in the process of constructing a K through eight school on the realty property now or formerly occupied by White Brook Middle School in East Hampton, Massachusetts. Quotation mark school. And whereas upon completion of the school, certain property, structures and fixtures known as the Maple Street School, Pepin School, Pepin School Parking Lot, and Center School, collectively former schools, as further defined below, will no longer be necessary for school-related purposes. And whereas in order to allow the city to utilize and or dispose of the former schools in a timely and orderly manner, it is necessary that the East Hampton School Committee declare that the former schools are no longer necessary for school-related purposes and are surplus. I move that the school committee vote to declare the structures, real property, and fixtures currently used for school-related properties at the following locations, collectively former schools, are no longer necessary, are surplus, and may be turned over to the City Council for the city of East Hampton. Maple Street School, Seven Chapel Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts, Assessors Map ID 54/24, the deed to which is found at Book 1062, page 14 in the Register of Deeds for Hampshire County, Massachusetts. And Pepin School, Four Park Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. Assessors Map ID 52/82, source of ownership unknown or undetermined at this time. And Pepin Parking Lot, Main Street, East Hampton, Mass, Assessors Map ID 55/77, the deed to which is found at Book 725, page 131 in the Registry of Deeds for Hampshire County, Massachusetts. And Center Pepin, Ninth School Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. Assessors Map ID 52/80, source of ownership unknown or undetermined in this, at this time. And vote to transfer the former schools to the city of East Hampton in the care of its city council for general municipal purposes. And vote that this resolution and vote shall take effect and shall be effective on the date the new school is available for occupancy for school purposes and the former schools are no longer necessary for school purposes. Condition precedent, which is anticipated to be July 15, 2022. Upon passage, the Secretary of the School Committee shall provide written notice and a copy of this resolution and vote to the President of the City Council and the City Clerk of the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts. Upon satisfaction of the condition precedent, the Secretary of the School Committee shall provide written notice of the satisfaction of the condition precedent to the President of the City Council and the Clerk of the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts within five business days of the satisfaction in full of said condition precedent. And vote that this resolution and vote shall take effect upon passage and the occurrence of the condition precedent without further action of the school committee.
I second that. Thank you for reading that so well.
All right, any discussion before we vote? No, we've been waiting to do this. Okay, Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. All right. It's kind of exciting because this is just telling us that we're at a really nice place. I can't wait to get the elementary kids into the school. All right, on to subcommittee updates. Do we have any before we look at policies?
Cindy, I think you were supposed to take like three or four votes there.
Three or four votes?
Yeah, did you do two, three, and four?
Let's see.
They need a separate vote.
Oh dear. Oh my goodness. All right. I was reading it as I moved to vote.
I'm sorry. I was typing an email.
And vote, and vote. All right, okay, so let me just re, regroup with this. So the first is to vote to declare the structures, real property, and fixtures currently used for the school-related purposes at the following locations, collectively the former schools, that they are no longer necessary, are surplus, and may be turned over to the City Council, the city of East Hampton. Okay, now Maple Street, Pepin, Pepin Parking Lot, and Center.
So I seconded that.
All right, so let's vote for that. Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, aye.
Ben?
And Hersy, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. Okay, so we're going to vote to transfer the former schools to the city of East Hampton in the care of its city council for general municipal purposes.
I'll second that.
All right, Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, aye.
Ben?
And Hersy, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. All right. Vote that this resolution and vote shall take effect and shall be effective on the date the new school is available for occupancy for school purposes and the former schools are no longer necessary for school purposes. Condition precedent, which is anticipated to be July 15, 2022. Upon passage, the Secretary of the School Committee shall provide written notice and a copy of this resolution and vote to the President of the City Council and the Clerk of the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts. Upon satisfaction of the condition precedent, the Secretary of the School Committee shall provide written notice of the satisfaction of the condition precedent to the President of the City Council and the Clerk of the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts within five business days of the satisfaction in full of said condition precedent.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I'll second that.
Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, aye.
Ben?
And Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. Okay, and vote that this resolution and vote shall take effect upon passage and the occurrence of the condition precedent without further action of the school committee.
Is that another vote?
Yes.
Oh, last one. I second that.
Okay, Maren?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon? Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, aye.
Ben?
And Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. It only has one place on this for marking opposed and in favor, so I apologize for making you all listen to that twice. All right, thank you. Okay, so subcommittee reports.
So from Finance Committee, we haven't met in person, but I did want to put a little bit of information out there to the public. So the mayor will be presenting the budget to City Council next Wednesday, April 20th. That meeting starts at 6:00 PM. So there's been some really good advocacy.
Sorry, sorry.
There's been some good advocacy and encouragement by people really wanting to recognize the value of our budget that we put forward. And so I recommend that people come and speak at public speak time. Recommending that that budget goes forward as we proposed, that that starts to get us back in alignment with a healthy school budget. It's a place to start at least and continue to grow from there. So I encourage everybody to come to City Council next Wednesday at 6:00. Just so everyone's clear, though, the process that the City Council will go through is that it will first be presented by the mayor during that meeting. And then they will basically just agree to put it into the Finance Committee. So no budget's going to be approved tomorrow night, but it'll then go into the Finance Committee of the City Council. And then they sort of meet and have their individual meetings on different departments. The exact timing of that can be found through the agendas for the Finance Committee and City Council on the website. And then, so certainly if you're interested and you want to continue to encourage people to attend those future Finance Committee meetings and support the budget, the school budget, along with all of other city department budgets. And then that will then come back to City Council later, probably late May or June, depending on timing of all the different committee meetings. So just recommend people to come and speak out. That's the next big step to do. So please be there next Wednesday, the 20th at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others before we go to policy? Lori?
Yes, first I'd like to apologize for the squonky balls that my daughter's dog loves to make noise with. Sorry about that. Yes, wellness. Before we move on to policy, I would like to thank Ann for her presentation this evening as part of Julie Ann's presentation. We did meet, I've mentioned before, that instead of meeting as a huge wellness group, we meet to discuss topics that are relevant to the people who are attending the meeting. So a couple of weeks ago, we met the first time at our Mountain View School as a part of wellness. And Rebecca Edwards was there as well for the Healthy Youth Coalition. And we talked about the two concerns that have been brought up repeatedly, vaping and technology. So I'd like to say that Rebecca is working on a plan to bring a guest speaker in to train students and their families about the dangers of vaping and see what we can do as a district to curtail vaping. And it was already mentioned how we're moving forward with different programs that deal with technology. And we did discuss the way to eighth and we all agreed at that meeting, Bill Evans was there as well as the two health ed teachers and Dr. Leclerc, Julie Ann, that it's best not to endorse anything such as way to eighth, but to provide different training opportunities for families to help them make the proper, healthy decisions for their own families. So we will continue to do that. And once again, please get in touch with me anytime at the School Committee website address if you have concerns related to wellness. And speaking of wellness again, I'd like to say that I did sign up our district for the spring. And speaking of wellness again, I'd like to say that I did sign up our district for the spring walk, roll, and bike event, which is scheduled for May fourth. It's another Wednesday, so hopefully the weather will cooperate, and I'll be getting in touch with our police department who always support us. But Dr. Leclerc, in the past, we had an official start time for the middle school as seven thirty, but the last event for the hot chocolate, we moved it to seven fifteen. I think it's best to move it to seven fifteen. And could you also please check with your elementary school administrators to make sure that they wanna participate as well? Because as I said, I signed us up. We're very excited that we have gotten a grant from Safe Roots to Schools to move forward, making our ways even safer off the bike path into Mountain View. So I wanna continue to show them that our community is very interested in these endeavors.
Okay, I will. I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to move right into policy?
Yep.
Okay, so as the acting chairperson of policy, I would like to say I am so thrilled to have Shannon Dunham join us again this evening. We have truly missed her. And as a member of policy, I've said before that Shannon really took it on to clean up the old policies. And I've tried to, to step into her shoes. It's been very hard. So I hope that this is the last time that I will have to make these motions and that she will take over. Shannon, unless you wanna read the motions, or you want me to do that and you second them?
Um, why don't you go ahead since you've already got it here, Lori?
Okay.
I'm also, but thank you very much. I appreciate.
I mean it.
Doing this for me.
I'm so thrilled. You know how I feel about this book. Okay.
I know.
All right, so we did meet, and you have already received the first reading. So I would like to move to approve the second reading of changes recommended by M A S C as presented for A C non-discrimination.
Thank you.
Would you second that?
I will second that. Thank you. Maren.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Lori.
Lori Garcia, I.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, I.
Cindy Kozinski, I.
I would like to approve the second reading of recommended policy by M A S C as presented. A C R non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation.
I'd like to, or second that. Sorry. Maren.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Ben.
And Hershey, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I.
I would like to move to approve the second reading of changes recommended by M A S C as presented for A C A B sexual harassment.
I'll second that, please.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon. Shannon Dunham, I.
Lori.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben.
And Hershey, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I.
I would now like to move to approve the second reading of changes as presented to J L C D administering medicines to students.
I'll second that.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon. Shannon Dunham, I.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I.
I would now like to move to approve the second reading of changes as presented for E E transportation.
I'd like to second that, please.
Maren.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Laurie Garcia, I. And the last one, oh, sorry.
Ben.
And Hershey, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I.
So sorry, I'm just so eager to get done with this list. Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, and the last one, I would like to move to approve the second reading of recommended policy by M A S C as presented. J I C K harassment of students.
I'll second that, please.
Maren.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Lori.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Ben.
And Hershey, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I. All right. We are in the section called Other, and is there an other that people would like to mention? Ben.
This is maybe just building on the policy, the subcommittee discussion. But I was poking around in the manual this weekend, you know, just being a diligent person. I was actually trying to, I was trying to answer a question. No, I was trying to answer a question for a parent, actually, about homeschooling. But I ended up running into this policy, this is actually on the M A S C site, called Student Involvement in Decision Making, and it's J I B. And I just went over to our manual to see if we had that, and we don't have it. And what it basically says is that by law, there's supposed to be a student council in the high school, which apparently there is. I mean, Kayla comes, and I think she's part of a team, I'm assuming. But according to law, we're supposed to meet, us, like the school committee is supposed to meet with them every other month while, while school is going on, while school's in session. And it just seemed like an important, this, to me, this is an important question because one thing that I'm noticing while being on the committee is that I'm really, I haven't heard a peep from students about directly, like how they're doing and what's going on with them. And apparently, there's a lot of great stuff going on at the high school. It sounds like Cindy Mohica's really, like, involved in some fantastic projects. But I guess I'm, I'm hopeful that we can amplify student voices. And, and, and I would, as a school committee member, I would very much love to sit down with a bunch of students and kinda hear, what are you, what are you dealing with? How's it going? How's it, how's it, you know, what are you struggling with? What's, you know, thinking about Jen Sandler's comments about M C A S, you know, me, I'm a big M C A S, like, I am angry man about M C A S, but I would love to have conversations with how, how, how are our students doing? And if possible, I mean, I would love to find ways, now that M C A S is over, and we don't have to focus so much on, on testing preparation. I'm thinking about the mental health of students, which has come up a bunch in this meeting and has come up for meetings since, you know, COVID began. I'm wondering about things like amplifying middle school students' voices and amplifying elementary school students' voices and trying to find ways for, you know, I don't know if it's like circle time, you know, like getting together and letting kids kinda talk about, like, what, what's it like? You know, how are you doing? And not in a way that's just like driven toward the curriculum. Not in a way that's driven towards some sort of like state standard outcome, like something that just lets students kinda talk to us about what are they feeling? Because as far as I can tell, and I, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a huge scope of connection to all the students, but I, I talked to a lot of parents, and I hear from a lot of students, and it sounds to me like folks are struggling. There's a lot of struggle. There's a lot of frustration. There's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of anxiety. And I know that we have tools in place to kinda work with this stuff. But I guess what I'm looking for is more direct contact with students. And I think that we would be well-served as a committee to listen to what the students themselves are saying and not just make, you know, policies and not just speak for them constantly. And this is my last point before I stop talking about this. And I ran into this other policy, which is thirty years old. It's one of the ones you haven't hit yet, Shannon. We'll get to it. We'll get it.
I'm sure I have.
You might have, you might have. But it's actually weird because it's in, it's in our manual, but it's not in N A S C's manual. And it's, it's just about the, the job of the school committee is to solely focus on the needs of students. Like, our number one priority as a committee is to listen to what our students need, and we do that, right? We totally do that. But I, but I, I sometimes think that, like, we are mediated by all kinds of things, whether it be bureaucracies and rules and laws and everything else, and that's legit too. But what are our students actually living with? What are they dealing with? I think it would be really great to put a little more attention to those concerns, those questions. That's all. Soapbox over. Goodbye.
No, I totally, I totally hear you, and thank you very much, Ben, for saying all of that. I did go through my calendar and just take a quick peek, just to see if, if we had an open slot next Tuesday opposite our regular meeting to do a policy meeting. If that's.
Sorry, I'm on vacation next week.
Oh, you are?
Yes, I'm a teacher.
School vacation.
Sorry, I don't know what that means anymore.
It means I need a vacation.
That's the problem.
But I'm happy to meet Shannon. I'll be in touch with you about setting up a meeting, okay? Yeah, um, because I'd like to get, I don't think we have anything like pressing that needs to be gone over. I mean, I think most of what we had, we already did. I know there's some things coming up that Ben wanted to go through, go over.
There's nothing new.
Look. And, and Ben, we could probably do that next week while they're on vacation. Are you on vacation too?
I am not on vacation. I'm at the H C C, so our, our vacation is different.
But we could probably go through what I have as far as that, remember I told you what, that list I had? We could go through that if you wanted to do that, if that's okay with everybody else. And then possibly come up with another time, you know, we'll get together, you know, before the next regular meeting, in case there's something that we need to go over.
I would love to just, like, emphasize that the student council, government council sort of committee, like, really does, we really do that. I think by law, at least, we're supposed to be doing that.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Leclerc, but we're actually doing that when we have our student representative update. So that is a student council member who is representing the school. And her job is, if there is an issue, to bring that to the school committee, but also to tell us what's going on. So we have always had a student representative. And that's, that's what they're actually talking about, having someone sit on the, at the meetings and let us know what's going on. So we've been.
We can take a look at that policy. I think part of the challenge will be your committee, like most other committees, you have a lot of working adults that are not accessible during times when students are in school.
Right.
So that makes it challenging.
I know it's one of the things that I've had on my, you know, list of things to do, you know, in the, in the policy subcommittee. So I will definitely keep that on the, you know, on the top of the pile.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great that we have the rep come in and, and talk a little bit about the things that they're planning. And I'm just wondering if we could, like, you know, take it a step further even and just maybe hear kind of like further about what's, what's up, you know what I mean? It's cool. It's like we, we getting a report on the calendar of what they've got planned. It's fantastic. But I'm just thinking, like, okay, like, let's, it'd be cool to get a more direct connection or something that's exclusively for students. It's something I'm interested in. But we could talk about this more. I'm happy to keep it.
But I also think we could give that message to our student representative and just say, you know, could you please, as the, the seated representative, you know, find out this information from the school, let us know what's on their mind, and put that as part of your report.
Yeah, actually, I was reading around the state that there's different districts do different things. Worcester, for instance, they're, the way they handle this is, I think every second meeting or every second month, they dedicate the first half hour or hour of the meeting to the students, you know, to kinda come in and do their, do their thing. That way, it's like built into what's already going on, you know, because of the scheduling is, is kind of an issue. But I mean, there are ways to make it happen. I, I would, I just think it's, it's, it's super easy to be like, oh, we've got, we've got this little thing we do, and that's great. But I wanna, I guess I wanna kinda like amplify it and build it out and make it a little more pronounced in our district.
And I, I think.
I'm with you on that one.
I agree. But I think what I just, and I, I, I think we can easily get back to it. Dr. Leclerc will probably agree. The last two years have been very different. In years past, we've had many student, student groups come and do presentations and talk to us what's going on and what's on their mind. And I think that just the last couple of years has really changed that, especially the stress of COVID and all the, the concerns we've had around there. So it'd be lovely to get back to that, that student voice piece. And I think Dr. Leclerc and I, we put that in quite a number of times, almost. I would almost say every month, but at least every other month, there was a student group. Dr. Leclerc, am I right? I don't wanna say anything that isn't true. All right, Lori, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to agree with you, Cindy. We used to have that all the time. Things have changed. And we could invite the whole student council to come in, and each one could present, you know, a couple of minutes of what they feel are their greatest concerns or their greatest joys of being students in our school.
I, I would feel great about that. I just think that.
We'd like that because I can tell you, Lori and I'd like that because we'd like to get back to things the way they used to be before COVID. You know, just get back to normal a little bit. So it'd be exciting. I just didn't want it to leave it out there that we don't normally do that. It's just the last two years have just been horrific. So any other others? Megan.
You have my P T O updates. The P T O is working on teacher and staff appreciation for Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. They're planning it for the half day on May fourth. They're also hosting a bingo night on Friday, May thirteenth at Nonotuck, at the Nonotuck Pavilion, which is the one next to the Spray Park from five to seven. It sounds really fun. There's gonna be pizza, drinks, popcorn, five dollars a person or twenty dollars a family. They're also working on an end of the year performance for students at the elementary schools, probably later in May, still working out details. And they have another meeting on May fourth at six thirty. I believe this next one is going to be at Mountain View. So if you haven't been in and you wanna get a view, that's a nice chance to go get some experience of Mountain View. And they are always, oh, and also crooked stick pop day for each of the schools at the end of the school year, which sounds pretty exciting. Maybe that's one of the days that I'll need to volunteer something and come in. And they, as always, the more parents you can get involved, the better. They are always looking for folks. If you come to meetings, you don't necessarily have to have this huge commitment, but come and support and see what's going on and see where you can jump in. And Bingo Night will have lots of local gifts and prizes to win.
Thank you. Lori.
Dr. Leclerc, I didn't realize, I didn't look on the school calendar for the fourth of May. Do you think it matters that it's a half day and to have that event, it doesn't, does it?
I don't think it matters.
Okay, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Already a crazy day.
Okay. The kids will even be more excited to go to school riding if they get to leave early. Any other other?
All right, we're gonna move on to.
I got one more. One quick one, super quick. I just wanted to offer condolences to Judy Avril, who's father passed away a little over a week ago. I know that she's been, like, working incredibly hard to try to have a very meaningful end of Maple Year. And the hits just keep coming. So I, I know that that was tough for her, but, you know, just people have been thinking about her and wishing her well.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on to committee action items. There are no minutes, so we're gonna skip over that item. They'll be at our next meeting.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated three twenty-four twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three dollars, five hundred and six, sorry, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
I second that. Hey.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori.
All right, Garcia, I.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben.
And Hershey, I.
Cindy Kozinski, I.
I would like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated three twenty-four twenty-two in the amount of two hundred. in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty cents.
I second that.
Oh, okay, Shannon.
Maren.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan. Megan Harvey, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated three thirty-one twenty-twenty-two in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Lori. You're muted.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated four seven twenty-twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
I'll second that.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated four seven twenty-twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll second that.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye.
And an exciting one. I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request to Costa Rica April twelfth to twentieth, twenty twenty-three for E H S students.
I second that.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye. All right, so our next meeting dates are April twenty-sixth, May tenth, May twenty-fourth and June fourteenth. And we now have to roll call to move into executive session to conduct collective bargaining with non-union personnel. We will be adjourning from executive session and we will not be returning. So, Maren.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Megan. Megan Harvey, aye.
Lori.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon. Shannon Dunham, aye.
Ben.
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. And to everybody else, good night and thank you for coming. Okay, we'll wait till.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.